Yes.
Bill's a friend of mine.
Uh-huh.
He goes down at the, uh, fruit center.
Mm-hmm.
I saw him today at CBS, full mouthed TV, camera team. What do you got there? Look at this. Show me on the screen. Two on the Milton side of the market, with a broken down river. At the end, this beautiful metropolitan building.
Really? Oh, my goodness.
Crystal clear.
Down by Bernie's house.
Yeah, exactly.
Wow.
Crystal clear.
Oh, my gosh.
And in color. I just wanted to get a crack about the picture in the paper.
Oh, that'd be nice.
About four years off in February, I saw the Doobinats down there.
Uh-huh.
And they don't talk about a hidden screen.
Okay, so we can't sign it?
What's this special permit?
Yeah, that's a special permit. What?
You're talking about going through Brush Hill Road?
Yeah. All right, welcome to the, uh, to a meeting of the Milton Planning Board. We're not sure how many meetings we've had so far this fiscal year. We do like to announce what meeting it is, just so that the public can understand that we've met X number of times. So, uh, we've met a lot, but, um, we're not quite sure how much. Too much. So here we, uh, here we are. We're going to, uh, do we have any minutes that we want to do?
Yep. October? September?
Thank you.
These are the ones that you made changes to.
Thank you.
How did we get five million days to October nights?
What's that?
There's a lot of October nights over here.
Yeah.
I think everyone has.
So what do you want to do? I've reviewed these and they look fine to me, but, uh, if you want to read them, we'll have to defer. Do you want to read them?
Let's defer.
You do want to read them?
Of course.
No, that was the wrong question. All right. But this is good. Citizens speak. Any citizens, uh? We've got a lot of citizens in the audience, but I don't see that either of them wants to speak, except for Ned Corcoran. So why don't you come up and, uh, talk about, uh, the special permit at three thirty-three Brush Hill Road? And is it Mansions at Brush Hill Condominium Trust? I think it is, rather than of Brush Hill. Mansions at Brush Hill? I think it is.
I can't remember if I don't have.
All right, well, in any event, we're going to, uh, we're going to finalize this, uh, written thing, and then we're going to, uh, we're going to sign it at the office.
That's fine. I, uh, did review. You and I have shared a couple of drafts. I know that this is a semifinal version with some redlining, um, still showing. I have one minor request for a modification at the bottom of page three.
Yeah.
Where it says the town or an owner who enforces this special permit in the court.
Yeah.
I would like to incorporate, include the word successfully. So a town or, uh, the town or an owner who successfully enforces.
I, I think that that's, do you see that, Bill?
Just adding one word, successfully.
The town or an owner who successfully enforces this special permit in court.
Yep, that makes sense.
I think you ought to, you have to prevail on the merits of your case in order to be entitled to attorney's fees. And you and I, Alex, talked about the issue of drainage and exacerbation of drainage. I think where you have netted out is fine. I know that, um, um, the client is not entitled entirely pleased, but I think, I think the intent of the language is right. I think the intent is that, um, and based on the, on the testimony we heard from several butters, um, the other day, that if there are problems that are coming from stormwater management on the site, then those issues need to be mitigated, um, to the extent that's possible. So.
Okay.
And with that, I would ask that the board approve, um, the draft, um, as indicated, and that we would ask the board then to sign, um, you know, as convenient, um, this week at the office, if possible.
Okay, I, I think that that's a reasonable request, and, uh, shall we do that?
Yep, so I'll move that, uh, the board approve the draft that was given to us as amended today as the final document.
Okay, uh, are we have a second? All in favor? Aye. Okay, I think everyone is, uh, we've got, uh, a majority vote, so we're, uh, in good shape for signing this at the, uh, office of the town planner.
With that one change.
With that one change. And removing the, uh, okay.
When do you expect, uh, the sale of those units?
What?
Um, before the end of the year, if at all. Yeah, it would have to be before the end of the year.
Okay, well, we're going to, uh, sign it this week.
Great. Knowing that, knowledge that the board has approved the amendment to special permit, obviously it's subject to appeal, but I don't anticipate an appeal. And then we anticipate a sale before the end of the year. And that's, that's necessary in accordance with the, with the master deed that was filed. It requires that any sale of development rights be done by December thirty-one of this year, so.
Okay, well, we, uh, wish you well and, uh, good luck.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, we're going to discuss Curry College now, just because, uh, that seems like, uh, a good thing to discuss. As you recall, at town meeting last year, there was a warrant article saying, turn off your lights and turn down your sound. And, uh, the Selectmen and Planning Board agreed to look into the matter. And, uh, I don't know that, uh, we necessarily said we'll be back in October, but I think we may have. But, uh, in any event, we've got an interim report from Bill. So we look forward to hearing it, Bill.
Mr. Duffy, can I use your? No, Alex asked everybody to bring their stuff, and I forgot the Curry stuff. I know that I have visited the, the site several times. I know that Curry has responded to the town meeting request that, uh, the Selectmen and the Planning Board go back and look at what's happening out there. What you have before you is Curry's response, uh, Curry's lawyer's response, and the article itself. There's nothing in there that the town can do to force Curry to do any of these things, but Curry has taken upon themselves to take and change some of their, uh, their situations over there. They have no leaf blowing before eight o'clock. It used to start at seven. They also have started a piece that, um, if they can start in the middle of their campus and start working out, they do do that, so that they may not even get to you before, uh, nine or ten. No weekday activity prior to seven o'clock, no use of the field lights in the morning. Previously, there was a six AM start and the lights were on when needed. There's no activity prior to seven AM on weekends. There's no use of lights in the morning. Previously, they had allowed six o'clock and allowed lights. They do try to keep that to eight o'clock whenever possible. The speakers. Last week, they signed a, beginning of last week, they signed a contract with a company to replace the speakers down on the field. Presently, they use two very large speakers. Now they're going with a company that has directional speakers. They're much smaller, and there's many more of them. And they will be installed, I think they've already ordered them, so they're on their way. The idea is you don't need the volume, because you've directed the speakers at a situation. So you don't, one, you don't need volume. They're not trying to hear over everybody. It's, it's closer to you, so it won't be as loud. So they have reoriented the speakers. And the same thing will happen with the softball field. They have taken and turned some of the lights. They've been working with, they've been working at different people's properties that they've been visiting, going down track with the, uh, the lighting contractor. They've actually repositioned some of the lights. The guy's up in the bucket, literally turning the light, is there at somebody's house, right, left, down, over, whatever. They've met with some of the neighbors. They've, you know, had discussions with others. They're reviewing the speakers and the DJs. The DJs, they have talked to. They have a new timeline that, um, they can only play half an hour before and half an hour afterwards. The situation of the lights themselves, the lights all come with a small hood, this on the top and on the sides. You can see them when they're shut off. If you want to go there and look at them when they're on, you can't see them. The lights are too bright. They're not quite as big as these hoods, but they are, they are hoods. They're smaller. They're only probably the four inch variety. These lights have a life that is probably another five to six years, and they're already looking into the next generation of lights and what would be required and how to get that light even more out of the people's yards. They have made arrangements with the lighting company to come back after leaf out. They did it two weeks ago when they did this. They're coming back and do it again after leaf out, and they'll do it again. I think that takes into account all the, the issues that we had. I mean, the baseball bats and stuff. They can't not use metal bats. It's an NCAA requirement that they use metal bats. A lot of those early weekend mornings, when you start hearing bats, those are kids from the town of Milton that are in different programs that use those fields. And I think that's it.
Well, that sounds promising. We should, it seems to me we should, uh, see what their voluntary, uh, measures, how they're received in the, uh, in the neighborhood. I know that they say, oh, this is all Dover Amendment and, uh, you can't touch us, but I recall that Tabor Academy in Marion wanted to put some lights up on its field, and they're not there yet. And that was a number of years ago. So I, I think that they're taking a brave stance on the Dover Amendment, but I think that, uh, the, uh, idea of a DJ, uh, playing before and after games is not necessarily an educational use that's protected by the Dover Amendment. So, uh, we will see how, uh, how, what they're voluntarily doing is received in the neighborhood, but, uh, don't consider ourselves powerless.
Well, and they were very specific in the lawyer's letter about you can't, um, make regulations that are focused at Curry alone, but in fact, or any particular institution alone, but in fact, noise and light regulations that apply to the town as a whole would apply to anything within the town, including institutions, so.
That's right. If you had a DJ in your backyard, half an hour before you.
But, but there are noise regulations, there are lighting regulations that we could put in townwide. There's also something called an institutional review, which we don't do in this town, which other towns have done. I have not looked at those, so I can't even begin to talk about them, but I know that it's possible. And that's something that we're looking at, and the recommendations for the master plan. So there, there are things that we could look at as a board. There are things that the Board of Selectmen could look at if this doesn't completely satisfy the neighbors. However, I don't think metal bats is one of them.
Seems to me they are, uh, desirous of, uh, of, uh, working with us.
Yeah, and that's the best method, is if we can keep it to.
By far the best method.
Absolutely.
So keep working with them, Bill.
Nice job, Bill.
Good job.
All right, now, you want to discuss the master plan?
Yeah, a good segue into it. So we are coming up for our final open house this Saturday, October twenty-fifth, at the Milton Public Library. It'll be held from one to four, and we're asking people to stop by for however long they have, um, look at what we have up as far as boards, is what we're doing, uh, in the master plan, what we've been doing all summer, and, uh, have a look and tell us what your priorities for the implementation strategies are. The next step after that is, of course, town meeting on Monday night, and we, uh, will be asking for town meeting to approve an implementation committee, uh, to be the sort of eyes and ears on the master plan. And the text for that is in the warrant. In the meantime, and that town meeting will end the public process for the master plan. After that, we'll give all the public input that we've received over the summer and this month to the master plan consultants. They will write the final report and give it to the planning board at some point in November, and then the master plan comes to the planning board for a vote in either November or December. So making sure that we have enough time to review the final document before we come to a vote. So, and thank you all for your comments so far. I appreciate receiving them. We've had a, a lot of public support and, uh, comments, and they've been very interesting. It's, uh, been one of the, um, most interesting parts of this process, is when we get comments back on some of the proposals, both pro and con, and why they're pro and cons. Very interesting. That's all I've got.
All right. Okay, now, one thirty-one Elliott Street is our final item tonight. And, uh, as you may recall, two years ago, we denied the plan for mixed-use development at one thirty-one Elliott Street. And last year, Senator Joyce attempted to, uh, get the project back on track. And it was suggested that a way to do that would be to move the entire building ten feet further away from Central Avenue, allowing for a much greater public space along Central Avenue. And, uh, we have a, uh, we have, in your attachment sheets, we have, I, I think we have a little sketch of what Central Avenue might look like. Its attachment pin. And this was, uh, something that Cheryl Cosaius drew up. And you can see it. That extra ten feet, um, created, uh, a public space which curves around the, uh, the building to the trolley stop. And so it really incorporates, uh, incorporates a lot of, uh, a lot of turf, but it, it provides a, a passageway to, from the square to the river and the bike path and, uh, that seemed like a good idea. And in doing so, as you remember, there was a question of whether the building was too overpowering, four feet away from the, um, four feet away from the sidewalk, and by moving it back ten feet, that reduces the appearance of, uh, of bulk. And it was, uh, it was felt that this could, uh, could solve the problem. That problem. Now, if you look at attachment ten, page two, you can see the sort of, uh, this is a rendering that Cheryl did, showing people walking down towards the trolley stop and how the trolley stop could be incorporated into the, the residence district. We had some height issues and some story issues, and I, I think those issues are, are, are solved. So what we have, if you look at, uh, well, shall we just go through the attachments briefly? The first one, uh, and, and I'll describe the difference. The first one, uh, attachment one, shows the, uh, ground floor commercial area. That's really the principal commercial space that would be used. If you look over at parking spaces twenty and twenty-one, and you see passageway entrance, which is the passageway for people entering the, uh, entering the garage, uh, that entrance, uh, basically, spaces nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, if this area were used for business, we'd lose three spaces, and since the, the, uh, the storefront is needed for a door to the parking lot, uh, there is no, we've retained the parking spaces and have not, uh, provided for a commercial area there. So that is a, that is a change.
So this, um, plan that you have here is not, you, you've, the, the numbers are altered to agree with the numbers in the draft permit, but the plan itself is the older plan. So when we look at the, the actual, um, outline of what the space is, it's going to end up being slightly different.
No, no. Why?
Well, for one thing, the, um, there's thirty-four parking spaces in here, not the laid out.
Oh, 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 but they're not, uh.
And not the thirty-three.
Two of them, two of them were where it says passageway entrance, so that there are only thirty-three spaces.
Okay, but, well, that's what I'm saying, is the plan does not.
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah, and, and as we go through.
The numbering, the numbering is off, right.
Well, but as we go through these, I understand what the proposal is and the discussions that you've had, but my point is, the plans have not, for the most part, been changed yet to match those proposals.
No, but the, um, the owner.
Yes.
Notwithstanding, uh, some good discussions that we've, we've, we've had, and some real interest. I mean, Jerry Conley, who is, uh, along with his son Steve, who is, uh, I guess they're the principals here, uh, has said that he's interested in doing a mixed-use development. As you know, he's got a forty-B, uh, proposal cooking as we speak, and, uh, that is going to be going forward, and obviously the board. When is that hearing, Bill? Do you remember? The resumed hearing? It's on the fourth or fifth, I think. I think it's on the fifth. Or maybe it's on the fourth, or maybe it's on the sixth.
One of those days.
It's in that, that vicinity.
Talk about the ZBA?
That's for the ZBA.
Yeah.
Well, it won't be the fourth.
Okay, so it's probably the sixth? Is that a third thing?
Sixth, yeah.
I think it's the sixth. In any event, uh.
I'm not objecting, by the way. I'm just clarifying that these haven't been altered.
No, I understand, but in any event, he, uh, they, they, they said it's, it's not in our purview right now to do another set of plans. But we would like to get a, a feeling for, uh, what the board might, might think of these. So we're going to go through them, and I, I, I will point out the principal problems, of which there is one significant one.
And the changes that will be made if this goes forward.
Right. Okay, let's go to attachment two, which shows, uh, the second floor. Now, you see there are two residential units, one oh-one and one oh-two, and then you have one oh-three, one oh-four, one oh-five. At least we're going to be commercial, commercial units on the second floor and presumably used for offices or something. But there was pushback, saying, look, the principal space is on the ground floor, and these things are not going to sell. They're not going to, uh, their people are not going to, um, come streaming in wanting to do this. What about, uh, having them, allowing the business owner to live in the unit? And it would be.
Labor units.
It would be sort of like a resident with a home business. And so it would be a sort of hybrid type of, uh, hybrid type of unit, but it would qualify for business use and, um, thereby get them to the magic half of the area of the principal floor. So, yes.
Seems to me, Alex, that, you know, one oh-one and one oh-two, right on the sidewalk and right on the trolley tracks, would be far better off over here.
Yeah, but then they couldn't get the cars in. This is the entrance for the second level from the parking lot. This is right at grade, and they're just, they.
Okay, I think it's a bad, bad location.
But it is, they're up one floor.
Up one, yeah, but still, it's right on top of it. Okay, thank you.
Well, they get to participate in the revelry on. Well, they get to participate in the revelry on the Central Avenue passageway. Hopefully, a good-natured revelry. Okay, in any event, that's, attachment 3 shows the 22 units on the, no, it's not 22. It's 11, 11 on these two floors, the second and third. And then nine on the fourth floor, attachment 4. And then attachment 5 is the roof mechanical.
How many units did you get?
There are 38 total, 35 residential and three of the hybrid units. The hybrid units are the.
I thought that's what you were going with, but in your.
I've changed that.
The proposal says.
I did. The draft is, I've got some mistakes in it. In fact, one of the mistakes was we didn't include the 1,200 square feet of the no man's land, which changes the, changes the percentages. But there are 35 units. You'll see that if you count the units on the plans, there are 35 plus 3, because I counted them today. And attachment 6 is, is what the building would look like, as is attachment 7, as is attachment 8.
So the effect of form and massing of the building hasn't changed? It's just been shifted up the site?
It's just been moved. But if you look at the, I mean, it's, in any event, this is, this is what the building would look like. So now we get to attachment 9. And attachment 9 shows one of the problems. When you move this building back, even if you don't move this building back, what you have, where it says parking areas and buffers to be shown on supplementary plan. And you may recall, initially, there was a plan proposed that showed a parking lot in this area, which, before the building was moved back, which, which had 29 spaces. The problem they have is that the zoning says that the parking in the resident, on the residential law, which is allowed, has to, has to comply with the parking requirements in section 7 of the zoning. And section 7 of the zoning has setbacks for, for parking areas. And the setbacks are, are what the setbacks would be in a C-zone for the, which is 10 feet for a dwelling in a C-zone and 8 feet for an accessory building. And it seems that the zoning may require the 10-foot setback on the sidelines. And then if you have a front setback, it would be the average of the, the building on the left and the building on the right. The building on the right is the Hendry's current, Hendry's plant, which I think is built on the property line, isn't it, Bill?
No, none of the buildings on the property line.
How close, how close is the existing building to Elliott Street?
Isn't that the part further stop Elliott, isn't that on the lot line? I would have expected it to be.
In any event, I think that if you average it out, you're going to probably have about 8 feet for the, for the front. If we could use the setback for an accessory building, we'd have 8 feet on the sides. And my view is that if there were a rear lot line, you'd need to have 20 feet. But I think that these lot lines along the tracks and along the residence are both side lot lines. And that there is, in fact, no rear lot line, because what is the rear of this parking lot? You could say it is away from Elliott Street, you could say it is away from Central Avenue. I'm not sure that it's, it's either of those is correctly defined in any bit.
Where is the lot line? Is it?
Here and roughly there.
So it's not a corner lot?
Well, they, now, the lot, the, the.
Roughly, I said roughly.
The lot line that I'm talking about is along the tracks and along the.
Right, but he was asking.
Residence border. And I'm not worried about the interior.
Right.
We're not really saying that.
I was, I was sketching the parcel for him rather than the.
But, but what we have here is, interestingly, we have part of this in the business zone, where there's no setback requirement. And then part is in the residence zone, where there is a setback requirement. And as I say, if we can have 8 feet, that's certainly better than throwing a 20 in there somewhere.
A 20 is necessary.
But the zoning also says that the residence lot has to be less than 20 spaces, because otherwise the setbacks increase. So if you read the, what I have here, I say 8 foot setbacks, only 19 spaces in the residence part of the lot and the rest to be in the business part of the lot with the building moved back 10 feet. And I.
And you've checked and this will all be accommodated?
I said to the Conleys, you know, this is a challenge. This is a challenge to, I mean, the original parking lot that they proposed didn't have any setbacks. So it would have had to been reworked, even if the building weren't moved.
Right.
But it did have, it did have lots of area towards the, towards the back, which, which, or towards the side. Towards the side on the, on the residence lot. But it didn't have, it didn't comply with the zoning. So I said to, I made it clear for some time ago, that this was a challenge and that we needed 29 spaces here, because we need 90 spaces total. And we've got 61 in the, 61 in the, in the building itself. So we need 29 spaces out here. And today, I talked to Jerry, and he said, I don't think we can do it. I don't think we can get them. And I, I, he said, we need some creative thinking here. And I don't know, I think that I have suggested that we can shorten spaces and have.
You could do some compact car spaces. Have we looked at it? We haven't looked at a parking sharing arrangement for this yet, have we? Because we've done that for Central, and I think we did that down for 11 and 2 Adams Street. And I don't know that we've ever done any parking sharing calculations to figure out how that would work. That might reduce, and I say might, because we haven't looked at it, but that might reduce the amount of parking that's required.
Talks about it on page 9 of 17.
Yeah, I know Alex wrote it up, I don't know that we. We worked out, we, we didn't work out.
Doesn't have a chart, like 36 Central.
Yeah, it doesn't do the chart, but it doesn't talk about if, if, we've never talked about if it's actually possible to reduce some of that parking. I hesitate to reduce parking in Central Avenue. But it's possible that if we worked out the calculations that we did, that it might reduce it a little bit.
The, well, you see, and I think that that is the sort of creative thinking that we need. But I'm not sure that parking sharing here, I mean, the zoning does say one space for every bedroom.
Right.
And it does say four spaces for each 1,000 square feet of area. And if you, to say that, I mean, if, and we're going to have to provide 19 spaces, which is share.
Right.
I mean, we've got sharing built into this, and that 19 of these 29 spaces are going to be available to the day to businesses in the area.
Right. But two, but one space per bedroom for a transit-oriented development building, which is what this is, it's right next to the T, is a little high. So.
Yeah, but that's with guest, guest parking and.
We can do some waving. We can, we can do a waiver.
Okay.
We have actual justification for it. We can't do it just because we want to do it, so.
If the lots.
What I'm saying is, I think we could take a closer look at this.
Okay.
If the lots were merged, is there, is there a way to consider the residential? Is that, would that convert the residential lot to business?
No, you don't want to merge the lots, because then you get over 20 spaces in the lot. And the 20-space lot has bigger setback requirements than the 19-space lot.
Even in a business district?
So we're saying that there, no, the business, I don't know.
I'm asking if you, if you unified the two lots, there's, do we have a provision in our bylaw that would allow you to consider the whole lot?
It becomes the most restrictive district.
So it would effectively go all residential?
It would go all residential and then that just.
Okay, so that idea is out, okay?
Well, that wouldn't be good.
That would be bad, I understand.
Would not be good.
What creative thinking?
Try and, try and.
But there is, so you can see that we have a issue.
Yeah.
And you can see that where I, I, in dimensions, I, I really, I really attempted to give them some, some slack in the dimensions that, you know, the 24-foot aisles became 20 feet. But.
Don't forget to leave some room for the cars to turn around.
That's right. The idea to do is have standards vendors.
I'd rather go the, the shared parking slash TOD ratios than reduce, than, than push the dimensions too far.
Well, in any event, we're going to have to figure out how many spaces.
So what are the commercial bedroom units being treated as right now? Commercial 4, 1,000?
They would be one per, since these, these units were residential units, which became commercial.
So they're being treated as one per bedroom, already?
So I was, I did the parking as one per bedroom, because, well, that's what I did. And I said that if the business use was, was greater, I mean, if it was a greater business use, they might have to provide more parking. Another, you know, possibility here is that you've got that huge tract of parking just across the river in Boston. And you, you smiled, Bill, is this because it's a good idea or because you think that I'm an idiot?
They, they don't have that attached to their building?
What?
Well, I think the problem with that is that if that use changes, if the property across the river changes.
No, they have to get a lease, obviously.
Right, exactly. But suddenly, the parking that they've been relying on.
And they probably wouldn't be able to get a lease.
I don't think so.
Yeah. I think that would be an issue. Also, there's a walkability factor from somebody who lives here or is visiting somebody here, walking in the snow with stuff. It's, it's a longer walk than people might expect for a residential. So you can get away with that in the city possibly.
Well, I understand, but if we, if we say you can get 25 spaces back here, and you need four extra spaces to reach your total, if you could lease four spaces somewhere, it's sort of like service zone parking. If you could lease four spaces somewhere, it might have.
Yeah, there's just so much pressure on parking in that area. Let, let me dig up the TOD ratios and work it out and see what it, we could look, what, what one in the range could be. We can see how comfortable we are.
Obviously, we want to know what a reasonable parking requirement is for a TOD, because as you know, they are proposing 70 spaces for 57 units.
Right. And that may be too low as a parking ratio.
It sounds, it sounds too low. And if it is too low, your, your research will indicate what the right, what the right amount is. So that, I, I think that it would be both ways. You're probably going to end up somewhere in the middle. Although 90 with, you know, guest parking and service parking and, I mean, this, 90 spaces is not going to be too many spaces for this unit.
Right.
For this development, because of all the demands, especially the 19 business spaces.
Well, that's why I hesitate to reduce the parking, but I think it's a question worth researching.
Well, I think if you reduce the parking too much, you'll, you'll start to impact leasability of the retail, commercial space. And that will become a problem.
Well, at a minimum, you need one needed space per unit, at a minimum.
I'm talking about the, the commercial.
Oh, and the commercial, sorry, sorry, the commercial units as well.
At least.
Yeah. Well, I was just going to check the bedroom, bedroom rates. I wasn't, I wasn't going to mess with the commercial.
Okay.
All right. So that's, and it might be, he did say that it might be, you know, if the 10 feet were reduced to 8 feet, it might make a difference. But I wouldn't like to see the difference before, before committing to anything like that. So attachment 10 is the passageway, as is 10. 11 is.
Good metric.
Is the lighting plan. I mean, the lighting plan is fairly straightforward, they don't have many lights. We've got lights in the parking area and a few lights in the little park going down to the Central Avenue. And I guess Central Avenue has its own lighting already, Bill?
Does.
Attachment 12 has grading and drainage, which will change somewhat. By moving it 10 feet, by the way, you, you make the building, the average grade goes up, and we've solved that problem.
Right.
Very nicely. The problem being the height of the building.
Yes. And the height of the basement, and what was the story and all that other.
Exactly. Attachment 13 is a usability plan. Then we have all these wonderful sewage structures and drainage structures. The attachments 14, 15, and then 16 is the building height plan. Now, if there are 38 total units, three of which are the hybrid units, and there are 35 residential units, the question is, if you take 10% of the units to determine how many affordable units you have, you either have 3.8 or 3.5, depending on whether or not you count the hybrid units, you know, the unit count, which I think that the, the zoning talks about, I've got it actually written down here somewhere, 10% of the total housing units. So the question is. So the question is whether or not the hybrid units are housing units or commercial units, because if they're. If they're not housing units.
It doesn't matter. You round up to four anyway.
Well, no, you round, I think you round it down to three.
I was taught in math class way back when that you always round to the even number, so if you're at three point five, you round to four, and if you're at two point five, you round to two.
I think that we've discussed this in the past, and there is a definite, my opinion has always been that the tie goes to the developer.
That's very generous of you.
Well, that's always been my, my read of this, but, you know, it, it doesn't say anything. It's, it's ambiguous zoning. So it says ten percent of the total housing units, and clearly, if the hybrid units are housing units, then three point eight would say four. And if they're not, you've got the three point five.
How do we enforce that those units remain live-work units? If somebody, if the, your hybrid units, which are live-work units, you live in them and you work in them. You know, they sell, as a developer, they sell it to somebody who's having a home business. Now it's been sold, the next person comes along, sells it to somebody who just wants to have it to live in without a business. How do we ensure that they remain live-work?
Well, it sounds like you could have the right but not the obligation.
No, you have the obligation.
You have the obligation.
If they're going to be counted as commercial, if, if, if they're not going to be counted as housing units, either for the purposes of affordability or for making our commercial square footage requirement, then they have to have workspace on them. Somebody could either have it and work in it or have it and live in it and work in it, but they can't have it and live in it.
Right.
So, so how do we enforce that?
So we're counting, so, just to be clear, we're counting them as a commercial unit for the purposes of counting to commercial requirement, but we're counting them as residential for our parking requirement. So we can split the baby here, I suppose, but we do one of each. I, I, I mean, it's just, I'm just trying to.
Well, we don't actually have to, no, one of them's a two-bedroom, isn't it? I was going to say we don't have to count them as residential for the parking requirement because it's one per four thousand.
They're all two-bedrooms, I think.
Are they all two-bedroom? I thought one was one-bedroom.
One, one, one office, one bedroom. No, you're right, one says one bedroom. You're right.
So, so that one's easy because that's just one parking space no matter what, but you know, they're both.
No, 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 no.
No, 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 it'd be based on four per thousand.
Take your, your square footage, and then you're, you're going to go, you're going to go up.
Four per thousand, yeah, you go up. That's the problem. That's the problem, right.
Oh, four, yeah, 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 yeah. Hmm.
That is the problem.
So how are we going to consider these units? Are, are these commercial or residential?
What? Well, what we have, what we have, we can, we can allocate the number of spaces for commercial, and we're simply saying for the home businesses, which don't, you, you know, don't require a lot of outside parking, we'll, we'll allocate a one space per bedroom or per whatever, what might be a bedroom. Or two for one and, and one for the, each of the others. I mean, we can, we can, we can do that because we are given permission.
I'm just saying we have, I think where I'm going is we have to treat them consistently. If they're being treated to make up the commercial square footage, treated under commercial parking, then they are not housing for the purposes of affordable housing. If they're treated as commercial one way, housing another, then it kind of forces it up to the air.
Parking, we can say it's a waiver, so therefore it doesn't impact the consideration.
As long as we don't waive a waiver, exactly.
No, I understand. But you may, you may be able to call it one per employee on those.
Yeah, you could, actually.
I mean, that's, we do that a lot with the retail, so you call it one per employee.
Yeah, yeah, that could be interesting.
Let me just put that, make the note of that.
And that shouldn't equate to more than two per unit theoretically if there's just two offices.
Well, they, you know, they, they can figure out how many employees they have and report it.
Right.
Well, they can't, certainly can't have more than one space per.
Per employee.
Per employee. Well, if we limit it to two, it means if they come into the two-bedroom and suddenly they're having four employees, they still only have two spaces.
We could limit it to two.
Well, it, it all depends on who is part of, I mean, the, the spousal team living in a apartment, they don't both have to be in the business.
Right.
So it could be two people, one employee.
Yep.
Might save a, might, might save a spot.
So then that, well, exactly, then that becomes commercial. It's treated as commercial for the purposes of square footage, so it's a commercial unit. We have to make sure there's a deed restriction on it as a commercial unit, as a live-work unit.
Oh, yeah, well, no, that would, that would be, that would be the case.
And you could cap it. You could say, you could also say the commercial units only get one space.
Yep.
And, and that's part of the, that's part of the TOD plan.
You could do one deeded space per commercial unit and then have a shared number of spaces among the commercial units to be used for clients coming in. Yeah, and then service zone. We may actually want to consider putting, requiring that employees use service zone parking so we don't run into the issue that we run into with thirty, thirty-six Central, where employees are using the parking directly outside, yeah. So that might be something to consider. Well, okay, so then if it tests of commercial three ways under this, it's not, it won't affect the affordable housing ratio. It'd be three spaces, three houses, three units for affordable housing.
It would be three point five.
Well, three point, you can't do a point five of a.
How's that unit taxed?
Commercial. It's a commercial unit. It's deed restricted as commercial. It's got a commercial parking ratio for it, and it fulfills the commercial space requirement.
Well, except the residential, it might be worth more residential. It would depend. I mean, the assessors would look at the use because the use determines the, we'd leave it up to the assessors, it seems to me.
I think that's why I said, let them deal with it. But for the purposes of the special permit, it's commercial.
I agree.
Yeah.
Now, but you were, you're rounding down now. You've agreed to round, now round down based on your statement.
Well, if I'm going with Alex's argument. I still say it should be four because I always talk to round up, but.
Well.
I would argue four. I would argue four as well.
I, I know, I argued for it, and Jerry, Jerry beat me back.
I noticed that.
I see.
We can leave it open for further discussion as we discuss the parking waivers.
We have, exactly, I mean, we have, we have discussed this and.
I don't think it's something that we should solve without him involved in the discussion anyway.
I don't think, I think that we need.
Appropriate statement, yeah.
Now, let's see what else we might have here. We really do need a, a plan showing the parking areas.
Yeah, yeah, we will.
That is, I mean, even, even.
Isle widths and everything else.
Even, even the most innovative anti-plan person would have to agree on that.
We would need the parking plan, I disagree.
If you, if you look at your number of units, if you, which is section page five of seventeen, number I. If you look at your, if you, the new qualifying lot area is thirty-six thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine square feet.
Oh, when you add the twelve hundred.
Yeah, so when rounded to the nearest whole number, and it doesn't come in at point five this time, the nearest permissible, thirty-six, eight fifty-nine. You can see if you take a.
I think we can go up, that would be thirty-seven.
It's thirty-seven.
There's no disagreement there.
And so, assuming, you know, that you're, the hybrid units, you don't need, if the hybrid units are commercial.
Right.
You don't need a waiver.
Right.
Because you're at thirty-five and you can have thirty-seven.
Right.
And if they're not, you need a waiver of one unit.
So if we, yes, so I would say that we, so far we've defined them as commercial all the way through, so we leave them as commercial.
Which would mean no waiver would be necessary.
Right.
I think that, oh, play is the right way of doing it. So then we, we go down to floor area and we get our thirty-six thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine. And you multiply that by one point five, you get fifty-five thousand two hundred and eighty-nine, making the, the building shown is sixty-one thousand sixteen square feet. So that's five thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven square feet in excess of one point five times the area of the lot in the business district. And that is, so they want a nine percent bonus, and the, the bonus for additional units is streetscape improvements, which obviously have, and the bonus for floor area has to do with preserve if feasible or replace and kind significant natural features on the site and provide significant amenities to the public.
So then we need to take, because we don't need the waiver under I number of units, we need to take that last sentence describing the public amenities and move that down to the bonus discussion for floor area.
I think that's right.
Yeah, and then that describes the public amenities more thoroughly.
He doesn't want to go off-site on his amenities.
Mm-hmm. So they're not going to do the, I, I think at one point it was suggested that they may do some cleanup, and I saw it in here as well. Some fencing on the opposite side of the tracks.
Well, he might do, he might do it, but he doesn't, he, he wants to keep things on-site.
So that's open for discussion.
But it is, as I say, it's, the bonus is nine percent. You can get a fifteen percent bonus, and he wants a nine percent bonus. And there are certain amenities which are being offered, especially with the building being moved back. And the streetscape stuff, so that's. Okay, I, I, I think that, I think that covers the, the, the issues. I was going to come in and, and, you know, if he's been able to do the parking, then it seems to me, I, I mean, it all ties into the parking. We've got to, we've got to solve the parking if we can, and then I think everything will, will follow.
Just a question on building height under P. So you had talked about the ground floor is going to be eleven feet, and then the other four floors will be ten-foot-high floors, and I just want to confirm that that's, that's the, that's the gross floor height. It's not the finished floor height. So when you're standing in the building looking up, you're not seeing ten foot. It's floor-to-floor. It's not.
I think it's, I think it's floor level to floor level.
Floor level, okay. That's what I thought, but I thought we should confirm that.
Let's put that in floor level to floor level.
Otherwise it gets to be too high. If you think, if somebody thinks they're getting a ten-foot finished ceiling, it becomes, the building comes to.
Well, I bet they will.
What is the, so I'm sorry, because you were, I was, I was looking at the parking.
Not even listening?
It wasn't.
All right, fine. So the question is whether the ten feet is floor-to-floor or whether it's finished floor.
It has to be. Understood.
It has to be floor-to-floor.
Yeah, that's what I would assume because otherwise the building would be way too high, but I think we should just.
All right, well.
It's, it's a question that I think could come up, so.
I think that we can specify, we can answer that question in advance.
The only, the only caveat I want to put up, first floor could be a problem.
Okay, why could the first floor be a problem?
Based on somewhat on the garage height, but more importantly on the commercial height. If you're thinking about, if, if we're thinking along the lines of a retail store, ten feet is not going to be enough.
It's eleven for the first floor. So, so that could actually potentially have.
It probably needs to be more, but, but that's okay. I would.
Then they'd be out of building height unless you wanted to make one of the residential floors smaller.
It's, it's, I think we should just have it as a discussion point with the, just something to be aware of.
Yeah, but the question is where would you get the remaining height?
I, I understand. I think it's just a discussion point.
All right, well, we, as long as we understand that.
I'm happy to discuss anything.
What are you using for base number when you square footage of the lot?
I thought I told you, but I will tell you again.
P, right.
P, yeah.
It's twenty-eight thousand six fourteen. The adjacent lot in the C district that we, we won't talk about, but the, the lot at zero Central Avenue is seven thousand forty-five square feet, and a lot of about twelve hundred square feet, which is no man's land.
Yeah.
Those, that's what I'm talking.
I have the twenty-eight going in.
Twenty-eight, six fourteen plus seven, zero, four, five, plus one, two hundred. Let me show you my calculations. Oops, I don't have them, but I did do them.
Thirty-six, eight fifty.
Thirty-six, eight fifty-nine, we're agreed.
I'm still trying.
Multiplied by one point five, you get.
You know, you know why that doesn't work? It's because it's twelve hundred square feet, too big. Because you're, you're taking, you're taking the new stuff. His original plan included the twelve hundred. He didn't realize that the twelve hundred was there yet.
I understand that.
So you kind of put the twelve hundred in there.
Well, we know what the size of the building is. The building is the building. I, I mean, the architect calculated the size of the building.
He did, and it came up thirty-five, five twenty-five.
That's the lot area.
Right.
Thirty-five, five twenty-five is the lot area.
But Alex is saying that the lot area is thirty-six, eight fifty-nine.
Well, that, it is.
No, because the original, the original.
What I write, what I write is wrong, but what I wrote is wrong.
I think what Bill's saying is that the orig, the lot area, including that twelve hundred square feet, is thirty-five, five twenty-five.
Yes.
That is the correct amount, so adding another twelve hundred onto that.
If his, I, I, look.
In which case he needs the bonus.
If that's, if that's the case, that's the case, but he says, it says the law that one thirty-one Elliott Street is twenty-eight thousand six hundred and fourteen square feet. Is it? I mean, if it is.
When the original thing came in, we didn't know that there was a twelve hundred square foot piece in here.
So we need to get this clarified.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. I, I think that's right because it would be nice to know what we're dealing with and, and whether or not, I mean, he claims to own twenty-eight thousand six hundred and fourteen square feet. I think that's what he's using in his, in his forty-B application, but if he's, if he's over.
We're going to have to find out.
If he's overstating the case.
Well, I know that when you wrote it in the, in the application, you've got the wrong number too.
I didn't, oh, I, I did, that, that was, that was, yeah, no, but that was before, that was before I realized.
You got forty-two. That's why I'm looking at. I'm looking at forty-two, thirty-six, thirty-five.
I understand, look, I understand. It's a, well, I, I don't, I think that this is right. I think it's, I think the thirty-six is right. Thirty-six, eight fifty-nine, but if it isn't, it isn't.
Well, he's got this streetscape proposal in there, so if he needs a bonus of one unit, then we have the streetscape proposal to evaluate whether we think it's worth the bonus.
Right. No, I, I think that's right. I, I, I don't think he needs the bonus, even if you take out the twelve hundred square feet.
All right, we'll have a look at it.
All right. Anything, anything else here?
Yes, what's, what's the next step?
Well, the next step is to wait for the potential applicant to say something. The potential applicant will likely watch us next Saturday on a deferred telecast, and will probably have some thoughts about, about. And we'll probably have some thoughts about, about, and, and I will report them. And hopefully they'll be, you know, it'll be good positive thinking and we'll be on our way. All right, what else? All right, I don't.
Do we have a November meeting scheduled?
Yeah, I was going to ask about that because I think we're scheduled to meet normally on the 13th.
13th.
Yeah, I can't make that date. I have a meeting I can't break. Those clients, they're not meeting.
How did you make it? You knew we wanted to meet there.
It wasn't my choice. I was informed that I was going to be at that meeting.
You were told, all right.
So I was wondering if the 20th was open for people? It's the next Thursday. And after that, we run into Thanksgiving. I don't think we want to meet on Thanksgiving.
All right, well, in any event, we're going to meet next Monday.
Right.
And so if there's anything big occurring this week, we can discuss it then.
What time are we meeting on Monday, y'all?
I think it's at 6:30.
Do we have a room number yet?
We do not have a room number yet.
I think the town meeting starts at 7:00.
2:39.
7:30?
I'll put it on the agenda.
Seven, I think it starts at seven.
They, they moved it back?
Is it 7:30?
It used to be 7:30 all the time.
I was thinking of another meeting, sorry.
We're meeting at 6:30.
Okay. We do need to have a date for the next, next meeting because there will be a public hearing on landscape special permit by Bear Nursery.
Has the AG approved the?
Beginning of September.
We, we're going to want to review that application to make sure that it's all there.
Yeah.
I mean, they have to have all these silos filled, so to speak. As you recall, there are 18 different things they have to specify in the application.
They claim they're turning it in tomorrow.
What?
They claim they're turning it in tomorrow.
We talked about.
Let's talk about this on Monday then.
Yeah, because we talked about with the next special permit, and I think this is the first special permit we've had since we discussed this, about having a technical review first before we schedule the public hearing. So, yeah, let's talk about how we do this on Monday so that when the public hearing starts, the technical part of it's already been done and we can hold the, hold the discussion of what people want to talk about at the public hearing.
No, I mean, this is going to be a long, long public hearing. And so let's start off with a full application.
They're listening too, so, good.
All right.
So we can confirm the date of our next meeting on Monday as well? All right, that sounds good. Check your calendars.
And we're scheduling one or two in November.
I think we'll only have room for one if we do one on the 20th and something else.
Yeah, but if this, if this, we start the hearing, we're going to, we're going to want to get it done at some point, probably before Christmas.
Well, we can talk about it on Monday.
We can talk about it on Monday.
Talk about it on Monday.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. Okay, any second? All right, all in favor? We're adjourned.